Welcome to the first in a series of political candidate forums in advance of the August 20th primary election. This forum is a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Our first group of candidates is running for Tallahassee City Commission Seat 1. I'm Lynn Hatter of WFSU Public Media, and I'm joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat and Danielle Irwin from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics. Let's meet those candidates.
The candidates for Tallahassee City Commission Seat 1, sitting left to right, are Louis Dilbert, Rudolph Rudy Ferguson Sr., and Jacqueline Jack Porter, the incumbent in this race. For those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion as well. For those at home, here's how the forums will work. We will rotate which candidates get to answer first. We have a lot of questions, a lot, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds, sometimes shorter for follow-ups. We will specify with each question. We will also be keeping time. We have a very technological marvel here. When you reach the end of your time, you will hear this. You don't have to come to an immediate stop right then, but please finish your sentence, and we will move on.
If you're watching on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited, so you can improve your chances of your question being asked if you keep it brief and polite. Make it a question applicable to all candidates. Any questions before we start? Okay, then let's jump in with the first question.
All right. The first question is for Mr. Dilbert. What's one thing the city desperately needs right now, and how would you, as a commissioner, provide it? One minute.
Well, right now, our city desperately needs a resolution to the issue with housing, affordable housing, and homelessness. And I believe that the best solution for that is to seek funding for an additional facility to house our homeless. I would definitely prioritize a facility that focuses on our special populations, our veterans, persons with disabilities, and our seniors, because they are our most vulnerable population. And again, with affordable housing, having places around the city, in all parts of the city, where individuals can live and be able to afford that's comparable to a living wage, so that they're not evicted as soon as they move into that affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, same question.
Certainly, I live in a community where it's been plagued with gun violence and violent crimes, and I think that affects all of us here in Tallahassee, Florida, whether directly or indirectly. As an incoming, I would believe that I would deal with public safety first, because that is a deterrent for those who would want to come to Tallahassee to attend our universities, those who want to move here to live in Tallahassee, be a part of its growth, to be a part of its natural beauty. And when we are classified as a violent city, and a gun-ridden city, that puts us in a very precarious situation. So as a commissioner, we would certainly be dealing with our public safety, improving our law enforcement, working along with our law enforcement, that they're able to have the necessary equipment, timing, moving expeditiously to solve crimes, moreover, to prevent them as much as possible. That leads to also, when we have increased public safety, that our homeless population, that affects them as well as we continue to deal with that crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I certainly agree with what my opponents have said, but I think the most urgent matter that needs to be resolved is our contract negotiations with our firefighters. That is certainly a public safety issue and needs to be resolved. They deserve fair pay, and I will always stand up and protect those who protect us, and I'm proud to have their endorsement.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, what makes, this is a 30-second follow-up, what makes you uniquely suited for this job over your opponents? 30 seconds.
Thank you. My time by working in the community, I have over 35 years in working with our community. I am in the community, I'm a part of that community, I've brought resolutions, I've worked along with our law enforcement and fire department, I've also worked with our most vulnerable communities with social services. This is what has propelled me to this place, and I believe I am more suited to education. I am also in my experience, but I also would say leadership and commitment is to this.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I am a proud Seminole. I have a master's in public administration and in urban and regional planning, but I'll tell you what I think qualifies me more than anything is the community support that I have. I have over 1,000 individual contributions, hundreds of volunteers. That support that I had in 2020 has rolled over to this cycle, and I think that, more than anything, is what qualifies me for this role.
Thank you. Mr. Dilbert.
I think out of my opponents, I am the most diverse candidate in regards to the sectors of the population that I am connected to. Not only am I engaged in education, having both degrees of Florida State and Florida Indian University, but I am actually actively working in the veteran community through my professional role, and I'm also active in the faith-based community through my church. And I've been involved with mentoring organizations and volunteering since I stepped foot in this city 25 years ago. So since that time, I've been actively engaged in diverse areas.
Thank you. All right, the first topic today we're going to start with is public safety. Commissioner Porter, last year, we had eight shooting deaths at this point in the year. This year, we have almost doubled that. What's one new action you would recommend the Tallahassee Police Department or City Commission take to reduce homicide and firearm assault rates? One minute.
Public safety is my number-one priority. It's the city's number-one priority in our strategic plan. Everyone deserves a place where they feel safe. It is a life-or-death issue, as we know. It is a quality-of-life issue, and it is an economic development issue. I think that one of the steps that we need to take is increased investment in our social services. We talk about the difference between intervention, and that's addressing the immediate need, and I believe that the council, the sheriff's council and the status of men and boys is making great strides in addressing that. But on the preventative side, we need to be investing in low-income and affordable rental housing, making sure that there are jobs, addressing the mental health issues that plague people. When people are committing violence, they are coming from a place of crisis. They need our help, and we need to come together as a community to make sure that we are addressing that from all angles. It is a holistic problem, and I'm committed to doing that.
Mr. Dilbert, same question.
I think we have to get to the root of the problem, and every adult who is an offender starts out as a youth at some point. And these desires and these things of interest that lead to crime start oftentimes at youth. So we need to make sure that particularly pay focus on our youth offenders and making sure that when they go into the system, first of all, preventing them from going into the system, and then if they are unfortunately in there, when they come out, make sure that they have appropriate measures and interventions so that they don't return. And that stems, it stifles them from going on to becoming adult offenders. So making sure they have appropriate resources to avoid going into the system, but also to re-acclimate them to society appropriately once they leave.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson.
Well, my motto is simple: When jobs go up, guns go down. It is important to understand that. I live in a community where it has been plagued with limited resources, and gun violence has played a major role. And unfortunately, as a pastor in the Griffinife neighborhood and greater Frenchtown community, I've had the undaunting task of eulogizing a lot of these, well, I would simply say three, who have died from incidents of gun violence. That affects both families, the perpetrator as well as the victim. And I believe that it's important to understand that we must bring those jobs into town. We need those jobs to give them a sense of pride, to give them a sense of hope, and a sense of responsibility. It's important that we begin to work collectively with our social service organizations, along with our law enforcement, to bridge the gap between our most vulnerable communities and those who would choose the way of the gun or any other violent crimes. It's important that we begin to have that conversation. Community engagement is so important. Buy-in from the business community, buy-in from our churches, and buy-in from our social services.
Thank you. Mr. Dilbert, how is TPD doing fighting crime in the city? Give us a letter grade and explain your answer. 30 seconds.
Well, considering that the crime is going up, I would have to give them a C. If they were at a higher level, then we would see a reduction in that. I also see outside of violent crime, you know, every now and again, I'll drive Uber, and I'm out on the weekends, and I'm seeing college students just having a good time, but oftentimes, it seems to be irresponsible. And so beyond, we're looking at violent crime a lot, but we have to also look about safety on the weekends and things of that sort. That's also contributing to drunk driving and things of that sort. So it's not just--
Mr. Ferguson?
Mm-hmm.
Same question.
Could you repeat it for me one more time?
How is TPD doing fighting crime in the city? Give us a letter grade and explain your answer.
I would give them, we all have room for improvement, but I would give them a B. I've had the privilege of being the chairman of the Citizen Advisory Council, which is totally different from the Charter Review Council that they had. And I worked along with our chief and the law enforcement there to bridge the gap between law enforcement as well as our most vulnerable communities, to ensure that there's a letter of protection, there's a letter of serving, and there's also a standard of cooperation. I believe that we still have a long way to go. Nevertheless, I believe our law enforcement is getting there with our community.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I think it's important to make a distinction between our law enforcement and our chief. I would give our law enforcement an A. I think they're doing the best they can with the resources they have. I would give our chief an F. I think police respond to crime, they investigate crime, but they need our help preventing crime. I don't believe that they are best equipped to prevent crime. I think other resources and investments are where we see crime prevention.
Thank you. Last follow-up from me. The anatomy of a homicide report was released by the sheriff's office in 2021, and the Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Report was released by FSU in 2023. What are your key, what's your key takeaway from these two reports? Just 30 seconds on this. Mr. Ferguson, start us out.
Well, since that report, and I serve on the sheriff's advisory council, that is reflected of 32304. That is an accurate report. We already do this report, we already saw it firsthand, and I commend the sheriff and FSU for putting it in an analogy that we can all see it and understand exactly which direction we need to be going to combat this issue.
Commissioner Porter.
I think what we learn is that the gun violence, especially just like so much of the poverty, is targeted in certain neighborhoods and a reflection of a disinvestment or a lack of investment for many, many years. So I think that it was incredibly valuable tools for us as policymakers to know where to best direct our resources, because this is a problem that we can solve.
Thank you. Mr. Dilbert.
I share the sentiments of my colleagues up here, but I think oftentimes, when these reports come forth, we look at our communities from a deficit perspective, and we have to make sure while we are working hard to solve the issues, we also have children and youth that are living in those communities, who are hearing these conversations and this talk about what their community is, and we have to make sure that there is a balance. When we receive these reports, we have to make sure there's a balance of the bad information, but also highlighting the good information. So I think I would like to see more of that in there.
Thank you. Turning it over to Lynn.
Thank you. Our next question was suggested by the Capital Area Justice Ministry, and the question is, instead of being arrested juveniles who have committed various first-time misdemeanor offenses may be issued civil citations in accordance with Tallahassee's juvenile citation program. Have we struck the right balance between citations and arrests? And this question is going to go first to Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I do not believe that we have struck that balance. I think as much as possible, we need to be issuing civil citations. There are some policies, as I understand it, that can be changed to make that easier, but we need the cooperation of our chief. And TPD is issuing significantly fewer citations than our sheriff's office counterpart, and we need his support and buy-in, and to this moment, I don't believe that we have it.
And Mr. Dilbert.
We have to understand we live in a capitalistic society, so somebody's making money off of this, you know, arrest, jail cells being filled, and things of that sort. So I do think we need to work on improving this civil citation system. Again, focus on rehabilitation, giving people an opportunity to correct their mistakes, because as we know, we have many prison cells filled with individuals who did not commit violent crimes, could have been rehabilitated, but instead, they were arrested. And I think behind every arrest is somebody that is making money.
And Mr. Ferguson.
Certainly, I agree with, I think it's important that we, depending on case-by-case scenario, when a civil citation can be issued. We're currently living in a time where young people are now picking up guns. There is no way we can issue a civil citation for violent crimes of that nature. But to those who are still first-time offenders, we have diversion programs. In fact, I'm the subject manager expert, if you will, for teaching Youth Anger Management 101 and also gang resistance education. These are the components, and these are the approaches that we should take with our children. Thank you.
Thank you. And the first of two follow-ups to that top-line question. Are you satisfied with the scope and the cost for the new Tallahassee Police Department headquarters? If elected, what procedural and project direction would you recommend? And we will first go to Mr. Dilbert.
Of course, if I were a police officer, law enforcement officer, I would want quality facilities that I could be proud of, that I could feel comfortable working in, even if I'm on the street, quality vehicles, et cetera, so safety is maximized. I do think we need to look at these contracts in the sense when they, so that costs don't balloon on us, and then we have to turn around and we have to foot the bill. An extra $30 million on a project could be funding a homeless shelter. It could be funding a youth intervention program. It could be going towards social services. So when these contractors come back and say, well, it's cost more money, you got to pay up, we have to make sure on these contracts that we do not make room for any ballooning costs that may come back to bite us at the end and cause us to have to cut other programs.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes, well, I certainly want to ensure that our brave women and men who are serving to protect and serve the city, I think they need to have all of the necessary tools and equipments to do their job correctly. But I also think as a commissioner, we need to be fiscally responsible to ensure that we're getting more bang for our buck. I would love to sit down with our chief and come up with another way that we could address the building of this superb place in order to ensure that we don't overspend, and we take those funds that we may have remaining to use them in other places that would certainly benefit the citizens of the city.
And Commissioner Porter.
You know, buildings do not keep us safe. That being said, I do believe our law enforcement officers need the tools, they need the tools to be successful, but I have a problem with a project that started at $40 million and has ballooned to potentially $200 million without the public or commissioner's knowledge. This came to us almost a year before we had that information. So I do believe we need to talk about what is essential, what is not, where can we build in the future, but have that conversation about what are our priorities and our needs, and where are other ways that money can be spent to invest in our public safety.
Thank you. And an issue going back to what was already raised earlier. What will it take to break the year-long divisive logjam in union negotiations with the fire department? And why is it that the firefighters have a problem closing the deal when the police union does not? And Mr. Ferguson.
Well, I would certainly say as a former response liaison and first responder for the Florida Division of Emergency Management, I understand the plight and the fight of our law enforcement and the fire department. Unfortunately, I believe that if I was the commissioner at the time, I would have asked the union to take that negotiations to the firefighters who are out here and let them vote that up and down. If they like it, then we go forward. If they don't, we're back to the drawing board. What I wouldn't have done is weaponize it for a political purpose in order to further my campaign or anything of that nature. I think this, we have to understand that our emergency services are very important, law enforcement as well as the fire department. They serve and they protect the city.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I think if I were a voter, I would be interested to know how much money was donated to the campaigns of some of my colleagues by the police union, and I think that certainly plays a role. I think we have a political problem at the city that requires a political solution. It's unfortunate that this has become politicized. The city has the money that it needs to pay our firefighters a fair wage. They protect us, we need to be there for them, and it's just unacceptable that it's come to this point.
And Mr. Dilbert.
It goes back to being fiscally responsible. If, again, if we have ballooning costs on construction projects, that affects our ability to be able to pay our employees, maybe the city workers, firefighters, police officers, it's all, it all works, it's all together. And so that's a consequence, again, if we are not watching our dollars more carefully. And so I do think with the negotiations, of course, every union has a leadership team, they make decisions, firefighters, police officers, teachers, and, you know, it's up to them to go to the, continue to negotiate and come back to the drawing board until there is an acceptable solution. I think we should spend less time, you know, attacking commissioners and things of that sort, but more time focusing on making sure that our firefighters are taken care of.
Mr. Dilbert, why is it the firefighters have a problem closing the deal when the police union does not? 15 seconds.
Again, it goes back to whoever is in the leadership of these unions. Again, I think sometimes these unions, they don't, they're not always reflective of the people that are working day in and day out, but you are a leader for a reason. You're selected, but--
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, same question.
I simply believe that it has been, the negotiations have failed because it has been weaponized for political purposes. And I believe that if the union president had simply just offered that to the firefighters, they would have made a decision up or down which way they wanted to go, and that would have brought us back to the table to definitely see if we needed to go higher--
Thank you.
--or stop. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I believe this is political retribution, and the union president has brought offers back to the firefighters. It's simply incorrect that it has not. So I believe that this is a political issue, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move the discussion now over to affordable housing. Approximately 42% of Tallahassee households spend more than 30% of their income on housing. Most of these households are low-wage earners in need of affordable housing that costs less than $700 a month. If elected, what specific action would you recommend the city do to increase the stock of affordable housing in the short-term and the long-term markets? You'll have one minute to answer. Ms. Jack Porter, we're going to start with you.
Thank you. One step we can take is making sure that there are renters' protections and supporters for renters so that they are staying in their home that is affordable. I think we can improve on our code enforcement to make sure that homes that are affordable do not fall into blighted conditions. We have the money and resources to support rapid rehousing as well. We can invest in our community land trusts. We can invest in additional funding for the housing authority. We can be building, we can be building homes if we want to. We can be buying land that other people build homes on. So there's a lot of options for us, but I think long-term as well, we need to be thinking about our growth management and our land use decisions. When we invest in urban density, it's cheaper for the city, it's cheaper for those who live in the city. I'm a renter. I think I might be the only renter in all of Leon County government. I can't afford to live alone and save. I have a roommate, and a lot of people are going through it, so I understand.
Louis Dilbert, same question.
You know, we need to look at the permitting process for building housing in general. I mean, if you go around campus, you see student housing popping up left and right, and these people are taking up space that we could be using to build affordable housing. For example, on Tennessee Street, you have a 10-story unit coming up, and across the street, you have another seven-story going up. And last time I checked, the student population of FSU freshman population went down 2,500 students in the last two years. So you have to build according to the need, and people, you know, like I said, we see developments coming all over the city, but are they really affordable? Can people move into them? Or is somebody just getting a contract to build, and, you know, and they walk away, and with their pockets full, while we're still stuck with an affordable housing crisis?
Thank you. Rudy Ferguson, same question to you.
Thank you. I believe that it's important to work along with, focus, have our, affordable housing, rather, to focus on more so infield building, rather than, you know, have people live within the urban service areas. I believe that we have to work along with the business community, those who are capable of building. We have a lack of affordable homes because we have a lack of homes. But if we can ever get to that place where we can have that conversation and that community engagement, where we can get people in homes, that is prime, that is joy, that is a sense of responsibility. And I believe everyone who wants a roof over their head should have a roof over their head, and we should also work very closely to build those and have those in place so people don't have to leave and go out and buy color or go to Crawfordville and so they can have affordable homes. We can do that here. We just have to be a little more business-friendly with these individuals who are capable of doing this, working along with us in the city, working along with our communities to bring this thing to bear. When we have more homes, the cost of buying a home, it simply goes down.
Thank you. We have one follow-up to that question. Should the city help meet local affordable housing needs through the reuse of vacant properties? If so, how? And if not, why not? Louis, we're going to start with you.
Absolutely. You know, if you, you know, we know in certain parts of our community that there's desolation. If you go to the South Side, you see vacant businesses that have had, that have left or made decisions to leave. You see vacant lots, you see abandoned housing. I was running around the community just the other morning, and I saw abandoned house after abandoned house. And sometimes you look at the permits, and that house has been abandoned for four or five months and just sitting there. And so we need to look at the areas of land that are available and try to purchase that.
Thank you. 30 seconds to Rudy Ferguson.
Certainly, in my community, and not just in mine, but also in the South Side of town, we have a lot of homes who are abandoned, who are dilapidated. We need to focus on how do we get that house off the ground and have someone to live in it. We have the necessary things that we can do to bring this to bear. It's important to understand, yes, rapid rehousing works, but we have to understand that everything from the top down or the bottom up does not work in our city. We have to be able to bring that thing to bear, and we have to work along with those individuals who are capable of bringing this thing to bear, and we start with the city.
Thank you. Jack Porter, same question.
Yes, the city has many vacant lots that could be developed into housing. I would support looking into whether there are lots that the city could purchase, and as I said in my previous response, whether that is, the land is in public ownership or nonprofit ownership will dramatically reduce the cost of developing affordable housing. Land cost is one of the most expensive parts of housing, so if that can be in public hands, it would reduce the cost significantly.
Thank you.
Let's go to everybody's favorite topic, Blueprint. Mr. Ferguson, are you satisfied with the job Blueprint is doing and how it is allocating economic development monies through the sales tax? If not, what changes are needed? You have 45 seconds to start us out.
Thank you. As I understand it, Blueprint is designed for infrastructure and economic development. That is important. As far as, I would say I am satisfied, and the only thing that would, that concerns me, rather, is the cooperation and the communication around the table between the city and the county. I believe that once they come together and they have a clear understanding of what their objectives are and their purpose, then we can move closely. I don't believe that affordable housing and things of that nature should come out of that when we're dealing with infrastructure and economic development to bring jobs to the city, to bring economic base to the city. That is so important. Once we get there and we have that in place, I believe with the airport and the gateways and also going down South Monroe, we'll have more people interested in coming here, and that would definitely help with the blueprint as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
I believe that Blueprint has a lot of great projects that bring tremendous value to our community and many that will, that are in the pipeline currently. However, I believe that there are new needs that we did not anticipate many years ago when Blueprint was voted on. So I do believe that there are some misguided priorities, some projects that I do not believe serve the public well. I was proud to lead on the affordable housing vote at Blueprint that ultimately did fail, that would have given us the opportunity to purchase land for the development of affordable housing with private developers. I think that was a missed opportunity. I was proud to oppose the $27 million Dope Stadium giveaway. Think of how many businesses could be benefiting today from that money we see today with Railroad Square. That would have been an opportunity for those funds.
Thank you. Mr. Dilbert.
And I can somewhat agree with the commissioner in the sense that priorities need to be realigned, or should have been realigned, in regards to where the funds are going to. I can't say whether or not I would have voted on the 27 million just yet, but I would have taken a careful look at that in comparison to what the needs are, especially if we're talking about affordable housing. So now we're stuck, you know, in a place where money's, you know, running out, or we have, we have new priorities. The South Side is dilapid, is becoming dilapidated. In the core of the South Side, businesses are leaving, and we really could use the extra funds to be able to deal with the affordable housing issue, and it was disappointing that it did not pass, but we have to really, we have to really be careful with these dollars because it comes back to bite us.
Commissioner Porter, how would you grade OEV on attracting new businesses to Tallahassee? And what kind of business recruitment would be number one on your wish list? We will be talking briefly about individual projects after this. 30 seconds. Commissioner Porter.
I would rate OEV around a B or C. Frankly, there, I have a lot of questions about what we're doing in that office, but I will say that a number-one priority for the type of project we should be recruiting is making the best use of our MAGLab, of Innovation Park. is making the best use of our MAGLAB, of Innovation Park. That is such a missed opportunity when we're talking about our, our strength in magnetics, where that is leading in the research. I think that is where I would like to see our resources be focused.
Mr. Dilber?
I would give them a B. You know, I see the OEV office all over the community, particularly their emphasis on helping women and minority businesses develop entrepreneurship, open businesses. And I, I think that they are doing a great job in that regard. And when we talk about, you know, economic development and fairness amongst communities, that I think that they really do a great job in, in, in making sure that there's equitable distribution of resources for that.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
I would say they are doing a fantastic job and I would give them a B. There's always room for improvement. We haven't gotten to that mark yet. But I would say as far as them attracting new business to town, that is so important. Amazon is a very big plus to us in Tallahassee over employing 2,000 employees with about 836 from 004, 01, and 03. That is huge. That's 42% of those who are living in vulnerable communities who have jobs now, who have insurance and have dental and healthcare. This is so important. So I would give them a B, doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. And did I get you, Commissioner Porter? I didn't?
Yes.
Okay, good. We're now going to play Was It Worth It? You're going to have 30 seconds to offer your thoughts on some particular projects, football stadiums and sports fields, starting with you, Mr. Dilber.
Well, our Seminole team and Rattler football continues to get better and better. So they did, they did look good. I don't know if it's related to the building infrastructure, but those teams under the leadership of Coach Simmons, who has left, and of course Norvell have definitely improved since the award. I don't think there's a correlation, to be honest with you, but I do think that it's, it's helping us in the sense that we can make up for some of that deficit that might have been caused by, by, by that, that large amount of money.
So you would have voted for it?
I would have had some questions before I did, before I voted for it.
Mr. Ferguson?
I believe that Florida State is, is a powerhouse. It is one of the biggest universities that we have in Tallahassee, Florida. In fact, I'm sorry, the biggest university that we have in Tallahassee, Florida. And I know that there is a strong economic base where people come from all over the country to come see our great Seminoles play football. And I believe that I would, if I was sitting on the commission, of course, my questions would have made sure that it was a strong and powerful and worthwhile investment. So not having all the facts in front of me, but if I had to, I would say yes, based on the fact that they are a powerhouse.
Mr. Porter?
As I said, I was vocally opposed to the $27 million giveaway to FSU. I support FSU. I support our football. But I think the argument that they are so rich, they need more of our money, doesn't really play out to me. I think there were so many missed opportunities and, and they had the money, they didn't need ours. As far as FAMU and TCC, I do think those were worthwhile investments. I think they, they cannot be compared to the Dope Campbell Stadium. I was not on the commission when FAMU was voted on, but I did support TCC's request.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, the $2.56 million in incentives for Amazon, was it worth it?
Yes.
Anything to add?
Oh, well, certainly because it brought the 2,000 jobs, like I said, and it also gave a sense of hope for those zip codes who are otherwise unemployed. And this gave them an opportunity. In fact, my son works at Amazon and I'm very proud the fact that he has been able to take care of himself, take care of his daughter, and go forward. So yes, it's most certainly worth it.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter?
No, I don't believe so. I voted against it and that's because the research and data show that those kinds of incentive packages do not really factor into the decision-making for a company like Amazon. You know, when we're talking about these, I mean, multi-million, I mean trillion-dollar companies, they don't need our $2.5 million tax incentives. I think that money could have been better spent supporting another business and recruiting other businesses.
Mr. Dilber?
Yeah, I don't know about that. You know, Amazon makes a lot of money. And so, and, and I, and again, on my spare time, I may drive Uber and a lot of those people are spending a lot of money to get out there. I've driven passengers that are spending $300 to $400 a week to get to work because it's, you know, and there's a look, there's actually a shuttle that goes out there now, but a lot of people are not taking that. And so if people have to take a portion of their check for transportation, that's not a vehicle that they would eventually own, then we got to work on that first. And I think I would have worked on getting some of those accommodations first before giving that tax.
Moving to the next one, the $1.8 million in the specially created recoverable grant for the Somo Walls Distillery Project. Commissioner Porter, was it worth it?
I, you know, again, I don't believe so. I don't think that that's the way that our taxpayer dollars are going to reap the greatest return on our investment. I have a lot of concerns about that vote and the transparency of the applicant, the, the conflicts of interest based on the applicant's support for several commissioners. But that business has yet to open. And so I think we need to make sure that there is accountability and strict standards for those kinds of loans and grants. That being said, I hope they're successful and I'm looking forward to their opening.
I do think they have a restaurant opening coming somewhat soon. Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Mr. Dilber, same question.
You know, when it comes to helping individuals with infrastructure and things of that sort, I think that it's yet to be told if that is worth it. Again, with the dollars being so stretched, we really have to look at the company's ability to do things on their own. And we got to be careful. Every time we say, I didn't support it, that doesn't mean I'm against the, the people. That doesn't mean I'm against the, the building or whatever the case would be. It just means that, hey, I might have given less money or reconsidered allocating those funds elsewhere.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, I think it's a worthwhile investment simply because it's a South Side gateway. When people come off Apollacho Parkway and they're coming into town, they want to see something that gives them a sense of, yes, this is beautiful. Early's Kitchen is right down the street, right across from Somo Walls. And I believe that they do have a grand opening coming. And certainly, I look forward to those who are living in that community to work at that facility, to give them a sense of employment and a sense of responsibility. I believe this is an investment, not a giveaway, but an investment that will be paid in return.
Okay, the last round, Was It Worth It? The rising costs of the $134 million airport gateway. Mr. Dilber?
Again, when we negotiate these contracts, there needs to be clauses that stipulate the limit in which a project can increase. Because again, if I sign a contract to speak somewhere and my, my plane ticket price changes or I have an emergency, I can't come back to the company and say, well, you know what? I missed my flight or there was a situation where I had to stand at a church. Now, you have to pay an extra $300 for me to be there. Now, some people might put that in their contract, but in all fairness, it is unfair to us to have to foot the bill.
Thank you.
Of those increases.
Mr. Ferguson?
I always go back to the sense of fiscal responsibility. We have to make sure that our checks and balances and that we're getting exactly what we need. The citizens and taxpayers must get more bang for their buck. If we can get to that place where it's spectacular, it's fabulous, rather, and it's beautiful, we're spending less money, great. But I understand that with rising costs, things cost, the longer we delay with permitting, the longer we delay with certain things, the costs go up. Timing is everything. So I believe that we must continue to look closely to make sure we monitor those type of expenses.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter, take us out.
No, and I have advocated for reducing the cost of that project, which would include reducing the scope. We already have a way to the, to get to the airport. And I think there are other ways that, yes, we can invest in that gateway, but redirect funds for other more pressing needs.
Thank you.
This next series of questions will focus on the issue of city management. From Mr. Ferguson, after last year's 8.5% property tax increase, the city commission is looking to hold the line on the mileage rate this year, but it will still be considered a tax increase by Florida law as the city stands to gain $6 million more with rising property values. Are we making the right budgetary decisions? And you'll each have one minute to answer this question.
As a, as a responsible taxpayer and hard worker, I, I never want to raise taxes on our hard-working families. And whenever we do have to raise taxes, it's because it's an essential, it's a necessity that is needed. And certainly, I don't want to put that burden on our taxpayers to go any further, but if it's going to get us to the place where we need to go in order to accomplish the very things that we need in this city, then so be it. But however, I think we should also take a more proactive role in looking to bring more revenue through our business community, through other endeavors, that we can underwrite the expenses so we don't have to, so we don't have to go with taxes increases. So certainly, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. I voted against the tax increase in 2023. I voted against the tax increase this year. I believe that the, it was unfair to our law enforcement officers, frankly, to use them as the justification for raising taxes. Their raises could have been paid for with general revenue without raising their taxes. I think we need sometimes, just like we ask everyone else to, to think, what are our needs? What are priorities? And what is extra? We need to be focusing on essential municipal services. And I think that when we do that, our taxpayers will see better benefit and we won't have to raise taxes. We are not a poor community and the tax increase did damage and was not essential.
And Mr. Dilber?
Ultimately, I think with any tax increase, you know, it is, it should be up to the, to the citizens and the voters and the people that live there to determine that. And I, I want, we want to avoid it at all cost, but the reality of it is to, because of rising costs in our country in general, we have to find different ways to be able to fund things unless we get some very generous residents to donate. And so I think that we need to be very careful. And if those taxes are going to specific projects that will overall increase the, the economy and make lives better for our citizens, I, I think we should support it, but it should ultimately be the decision of the voters so that ultimately that decision falls on us.
Thank you. With the regular 3-2 split, one of the most consequential stakes of this election may be our city management. Please assign a grade to how the city manager is doing. What is he doing well? And is there anything he could be doing better? Commissioner Porter, you'll start.
Thank you. The role of the city manager is a critical, critical role. And I thank our city manager for the work that he does to serve our community. That being said, I have given him an F in our, my past evaluations of him. I think that when we think about the public trust, when we think about his management of the police chief, the way that he has treated members of the commission who he does not like or who are critical of him, that kind of disrespect is not just disrespect of me, but the public who I represent. I've been disappointed by a city manager who does not bring back agenda items that have been voted on unanimously by the commission. A city manager who makes personal attacks on private citizens that he doesn't like. A city manager who does not respond to most of my emails. That's not the way that we do business. There've been many missteps and I think that we need a change in City Hall to restore the trust of the public so that we can serve them better and be our best city. Thank you.
Mr. Dilber?
I would have to give our city manager a C at the time because of, I think, first of all, again, I have a concern with the permitting issue, how long it takes and these rising costs and the contract negotiations. It is, it is ultimately costing us lots of money. And we have to make sure that, you know, our relationships with these developers and business community is not too chummy in the sense where it's easier for certain individuals to get business and much harder for others to get business, that it's equitable distribution of the wealth of the city. And so I, you know, right at this point in time, considering the issues that he's having with his very own commission, I would give him a C.
And Mr. Ferguson?
Well, I have never had the privilege of working along with him, but understanding the role of a city manager, this is a responsibility that governs the entire city, the employees and everything that, that affects this city. I will certainly say that relationships are so important, building a relationship with the city manager. I have an understanding, keeping an open line of communication to talk through, through issues and debates. But I also say it's very important as a commissioner to, to attend all briefings. So we attend our briefings. We can certainly understand and have that conversation with the city manager. And of course, we can deal with respect and decorum and we can go from there without necessarily having to want someone fired because they disagree with us. I think it's important that when we work together, we can come to a common solution that will benefit this whole entire city.
And what grade would you give him?
I would give him a B.
And our last question in this section, do current lobbying regulations provide public transparency throughout the decision-making process as to who is attempting to influence City of Tallahassee government policy and decisions? And are regulatory or procedural changes needed? You'll have 30 seconds to answer this question, beginning with Mr. Dilber.
I don't know all of the information regards to this question, honestly, but I do know from an, from an outside-looking perspective, I don't know if the transparency is there. Again, when it comes down to who gets business in our community, who has access to our public officials, there's still a question mark there. I'm not saying anybody's acting in an unethical manner, but again, what we, the focus needs to be on just continuing to look at that process and ensuring that there's equitable distribution of the resources to, to do business with the city.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understood your question. Could you repeat it one more time?
Sure. Do current lobbying regulations provide public transparency throughout the decision-making process as to who is attempting to influence City of Tallahassee government policy and decisions? And are regulatory or procedural changes needed?
I think it's, thank you for the question. I think it's important to, I believe it's important to understand that there must be a sense of proper conduct. We must be held to a higher standard as elected officials. We must be above board. Integrity must be in place. So therefore lobbyists and anybody else who intends to persuade the elected officials to go a certain way, that should be simply outlawed. With that being said, I don't believe that I'm educated enough because I've had that, haven't had that experience of working along with lobbyists, but certainly anybody in that capacity should be regulated.
And Commissioner Porter?
I've supported closing some of the lobbyist loopholes that I believe exist currently in the City of Tallahassee. These were recommendations made by the Independent Ethics Board that voters supported. And it's unfortunate that the majority at the time did not support moving forward with closing those lobbying loopholes. We have consultants and PR firms who are essentially operating as lobbyists and that needs to stop.
All right, we're going to do a quick lightning round now. The way that works is I'm looking for one-sentence answers. Some of them may even be yes or no. You know, no one likes run-on sentences, so keep those ands to a minimum. Starting with you, Mr. Ferguson, who are you backing in the other city commission race and why? One sentence.
I am backing in the city commission race, Mr. Curtis Richardson.
Because?
I've known him all of my life since I was a teenager, from the time he worked at the Urban League and the school board. And I consider him to be a father, teaching all of us and especially me. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter?
I certainly have a lot of respect for Commissioner Richardson. However, there's some critical votes that we disagree on and I think that for those reasons, I'm supporting Dot Inman Johnson for that seat.
Thank you. Mr. Dilber?
While I have not made any alliances in this particular race, I do have a great deal of respect for Commissioner Richardson. I do plan on supporting him. And that's based off of a, not a one-year relationship, but a 20-plus-year relationship.
Commissioner Porter, who is your closest advisor, mentor on the campaign and it can't be family?
You know, anyone who runs this campaign, anyone who runs a campaign knows that the voters and the community are not shy. So I listen to, to all members of the community. I've worked on campaigns before.
Thank you.
There's no one single person.
Same question, Mr. Dilber?
God and me. Me and God. And my wife, of course, she's a great advisor.
Mr. Ferguson?
I'm certainly going to go with my, my treasurer. She is a tactician and she is leading God, me and this. So yes, she has been very instrumental to ensure that I get to the places where I need to be.
You said her? Give her a shout-out?
I did give her a shout-out. Can I say her name?
Yep.
Ms. Hayes, Ramira Hayes.
Thank you. What's your day job, and if elected, would you keep it? Mr. Dilbert.
Absolutely. I love the work that I do serving the veteran community at AMU and those adult learns who are trying to get back into school, so I would definitely keep my job.
Mr. Ferguson.
Lord knows, I can't quit my job. I'm a pastor, and so certainly my people need me there, so I will continue to do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
I'm a full-time commissioner, though I have worked a part-time job as a grant writer. So, yeah.
Thank you. Single most prized endorsement and why? Mr. Ferguson.
I am very proud to have received the Police Benevolence Association's endorsement.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
But definitely the firefighter union endorsement.
Thank you. Mr. Dilbert.
I don't have any organization endorsements, but I have received the endorsement of a mentor, figure of mine, former school board member Georgia Joy Bowen, who served 25 years in the school board.
What is the biggest lesson you've learned from the recent tornado outbreaks? In one sentence, Commissioner Porter.
We need better communication around emergency response and making sure that we're supporting folks doing search and rescue because there were people who could not contact 911.
Mr. Dilbert.
We need a reserve for such events like this to help restore our communities.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson.
I think we need to look closely at underground power lines to ensure that when this happens, ever and when it happens again, we'll be prepared to deal with it, so people won't be without powerful weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Dilbert, what is one pledge you would make right now to voters that you will accomplish if elected?
I would, to stem the issue with homelessness, I would work diligently for us to get alternative facilities to house our homeless, focusing on special populations.
Mr. Ferguson.
Repeat it one more time, please, thank you.
What is one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected?
I would certainly bring to bear the public safety issue and make sure that we're safe and secure in this city, and bring also civility and an awesome sense of responsibility at City Hall.
Commissioner Porter.
That I will not stop fighting until everyone has a place that they can call home.
Okay, it's not red light cameras, but it's close. Do you support the automatic fining of school zone speeders for $100 a pop? Mr. Ferguson.
Yes, certainly, we have to protect our individuals who walk across the streets.
Commissioner Porter.
Yes, but I also support other traffic calming measures.
Okay. Mr. Dilbert.
Yes, let's protect our children.
Are we doing enough to prioritize and devote spending to underground utilities? Commissioner Porter.
No.
Okay. Mr. Dilbert.
No.
Mr. Ferguson.
No, sir.
Okay. Last one, true or false statement, preserving our trees is as equally important as economic development. Mr. Dilbert.
My environmental friends don't get mad at me on this one, but I do think economic development is important. However, we need to save our trees as best we can.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes, we have to find the balance between preserving our natural beauty and our environment as we continue to grow responsibility.
And the true or false nature of it? What's you're going to go with, true or false?
I'm going to, I'm sorry, let's repeat that.
Preserving our trees is equally important as economic development?
True.
True. Commissioner Porter.
True, I believe they're one and the same.
Okay, very good. You guys survived the lightning round.
All right, we're going to talk development. First question is for you, Commissioner Jack Porter. You'll have one minute to respond. Local government has received public pushback regarding detrimental environmental impacts of some developments, including Walani. In practice, is our community growing responsibly?
Unfortunately, no. I think that we have in some ways, yes, but in the past 10 years especially, there have been decisions that are going to cost the taxpayers tremendously for the future cost of maintaining that infrastructure, of building that infrastructure. We are literally clear-cutting trees, incentivizing urban sprawl, all things that we know are costly to taxpayers and the environment, we can do better.
Thank you. Louis Dilbert.
There is very inequitable development going on in this city. And again, you know, as Commissioner Porter said, you know, we're cutting down trees in Southwood. It'll be a matter of time before we have a bunch of housing complexes out there, and we are not focusing on building on the South Side, building in Frenchtown, making sure that the West and the South match the East and the Northeast.
Thank you. Rudy Ferguson.
I believe it's important for us to focus on infill development. That way, we can cut back on urban sprawl, or we can find those areas within the urban service areas to build from there. That way, we cut back on sewage, sewer, gas, electricity, you name it. If we can just build right into the city, I think we'll be okay. So certainly, we do have a ways to go, but we're getting there.
Thank you. Next question. The role of developers and dark money in city politics and campaigns has become a flashpoint. What do you think of your opponent's campaign fundraising? 45 seconds, Louis Dilbert will begin with you.
Well, I currently am the only, what I believe is an unobligated candidate in a sense where, yes, my treasury check is not as big, but I do believe that there are influences on both sides of both of my opponents that will tie their hands in regards to the decisions that they're going to make on the dais. And so I'm very proud of the efforts that I've made to raise funds. Sure, if someone wanted to drop me some money, I have to consider each person, but I would make it clear that that person does not have a stronghold on the decisions that I make on the dais as a commissioner.
Thank you. 45 seconds for you, Mr. Rudy Ferguson.
Well, I'm unsure what dark money is. I mean, since we have to report this on our treasury report, nevertheless, I don't believe that the money that I've received, and I'm grateful for the $5 that I've received, I'm grateful for the 25, I'm grateful for the $500 that I've received from the business community, and also from those in my community who can't afford to give me big checks. So certainly, I would say that it has, it plays no role as far as my decision is concerned, and there will be no extra, or should I say, special interests or things of that nature. I will govern with integrity, and I will govern with respect to who I serve and why I serve.
And Commissioner Porter, what do you think of your opponent's campaign fundraising?
Thank you. I'm proud to have the support of over 1,000 individual donations with an average donation of less than $60. As far as one of my opponents, he is funded by the same developers who we are talking about when we talk about Walani and who are supporting urban sprawl and benefiting from His average contribution is $400 minus 60, so I think that speaks for itself, and I encourage everyone to go to the Supervisor of Elections website to do your own research.
Thank you. Next question. The developers of Railroad Square have said pretty bluntly that they can not afford the cost of running what's often considered the city's art district. They are offering the city the first right of refusal before turning to developers. What's the city's role here? 45 seconds, Rudy Ferguson will begin with you.
I love our art section, and certainly our art district is beautiful, it's an awesome addition to our city. I'm unsure what the city's role could be, but certainly, I certainly want to see that Railroad Square is brought back into action because the First Fridays are beautiful, but I also would say that my opponent said I have, you know, she has 1,000 donors, so let me just be clear when I say this, that she has 400, and each one of those have given at least 15 to 20 times in order to make that number more thick. This is what we're dealing with as far as manipulation of our voters. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I believe that our arts, our arts district is critically important. When I first moved to Tallahassee, it was one of the reasons I fell in love with Tallahassee. The city certainly has a role, whether it's public-private partnerships, whether it's looking into buying portions of Railroad Square. There are models for this in other cities, and again, this is a missed opportunity where some of that money that was given to Do Campbell Stadium could have been used.
Thank you. Louis Dilbert.
When it comes to retaining the talent that is coming from our universities, I think our arts district is vitally important. If the city were to purchase the land, they need to focus on making sure that it's a priority. I was recently in Colorado Springs, and I saw an arena that was so beautiful, but it was a unique structure, and I wondered if Tallahassee was ready for something like that, that would attract people from outside to come visit as well as the people that are here. And so with our arts district, we need to maintain that. It is strong, it will keep individuals here, and it'll make it, you know, particularly for that crowd that's about 20 to 35, will make it feel like this is a place that they can find entertainment and they can enjoy their life here in the city.
Thank you. Next question. The city's Neighborhood First Planning Initiative targets the Greater Bond, Frenchtown, Griffin Heights, and Providence neighborhoods. How effective has this initiative been? If elected, what, if any, changes would you seek? You'll have 45 seconds for your response. Commissioner Jack Porter, you can begin.
I think the Neighborhood First Plans are great initiatives, and we've seen a lot of benefit from them. At the same time, I think that it is unfair to put that burden on some neighborhoods to plan for themselves rather than others, but I've seen a lot of benefit. I think the communities are excited. There's something similar to this called participatory budgeting, which I've advocated for, so I think that it's a great model for us to build upon in the future, and I look forward to seeing the results of those plans come to bear.
Thank you. Louis Dilbert.
Well, I think that they're doing a great job. I do think the citizens should be involved with the planning process, and they should have a say because oftentimes in other communities, government officials dictate what's going to go where, and some of that happens here in Tallahassee. And so that's what my concern is about the South Side, is are we building culturally responsive infrastructure in the South Side that the people that live there will use, can afford to use, and will frequent on a regular basis and feel like it reflects their community? So wherever we are doing this throughout the city, I think the citizen input is important. Even a project that they had for Osceola Street recently, initially I thought, when I went to the meeting, this doesn't make any sense, but then I went to the street, and I looked at what they were doing, and I changed, I was able to change my mind because I actually went to the location and saw that it was necessary to put a sidewalk in that location.
Thank you. Rudy Ferguson.
I am very proud of those Neighborhood First Plans, in fact, in Griffin Heights neighborhood. I am mentioned several times throughout that process, and the citizens did have a input. Before it was produced and published, a lot of the citizens in Griffin Heights neighborhood and also in Providence and Bond, they played a major role in what we wanted to see in our communities, what we wanted to have. And from that, we have a brand-new store coming to our Griffin Heights neighborhood. We're currently a food desert. We have a brand-new park that's been renovated, John G. Rowley Park, and it's beautiful. We have sidewalks now, we have a more sense of pride, so the $6 million that we have received, and receiving rather, is perfect, it is beautiful. Finally, we get someone that's really paying attention to the things that our most vulnerable communities have been asking for for many years.
Thank you. Commissioner Jack Porter. Oh, I started with you. Well, let's move on to the last question in the development section, and Louis Dilbert will begin with you. This will be a quick one, 15 seconds only each. What's one kind of development we have too much of and one we don't have enough of?
We have too much housing mask units on one side of town and desolate on the other side. The Northeast, to be specific, and then the South Side, to be specific.
Thank you. Rudy Ferguson.
One more time, please.
What is one kind of development we have too much of and another that we don't have enough of? 15 seconds.
Well, certainly, we need more jobs in this town. We don't have enough jobs that bring good wages, better health insurance, but I also would say we've got too many liquor stores.
Too many liquor stores. Okay. Commissioner Jack Porter, what is one kind of development we have too much of and one we don't have enough? 15 seconds.
I think we have too much urban sprawl and single-family homes, and I think what I would like to see more of is urban infill and middle housing, so triplexes, duplexes, something in between, single-family homes and apartment complexes.
Thank you. Wonderful. This next section is going to be focused on some of the state and local amendments that we will be seeing coming up on the ballot. Would the legalization of recreational marijuana, which will be decided by voters in November, help or harm Tallahassee? And how will you vote on the matter? 30-second responses, please, and we will start with Mr. Ferguson.
Certainly, I understand that it's used for municipal purposes and things of that nature, but to release it as recreational, it would certainly do my community in this city, I believe, more harm than good. I think if that is ever to happen, my question is how do we regulate something of that nature? And how do we control it, which I believe will be out of control? We won't be able to manage it in a timely fashion, where a lot of our young people have now faltered in, I would believe, in their careers. And as a pastor, I simply have to say I would love them to be sober.
Commissioner Porter.
I support decriminalization. I think the war on drugs failed, so I think that it will be good for our community if it passes as far as the criminal justice burden and racial burden is concerned, and I think it is an economic opportunity that hopefully many people can benefit from.
And Mr. Dilbert.
Again, being that we live in a capitalistic society, somebody is seeking to raise, to make money off of this. It's not about people's liberty and freedom and the, it's about who's going to make the most money. And so again, we got to look at regulating. Before I can support something like that, I have to be able to look at the regulation and making sure that it's a safe measure. While, also wanted to decriminalize it, less penalties, because we know there are people sitting in jail for very minor offenses related to marijuana. We need to look at that specifically, but not just be a free-for-all.
Excuse me. Under a proposed charter amendment, the salary of each city commissioner would double and equal that set by state law for a Leon County Commissioner, which is currently about $96,000 a year. Do you support or oppose this charter amendment, which is on the November ballot? 45-second answers, beginning with Commissioner Porter.
I voted no.
All righty, Mr. Dilbert.
Well, I'm a little biased because I have a job, but you know, I would not support it right now because, again, there are regulations that would have to be in place. Are they doing office hours? You know, what are you doing to earn that? I know they're working, but at the same time, what is the, how do we ensure that our money is going to best use by raising the salaries such as that? There have to be some obligations of the commissioners as work duties and things of that sort before I can agree to that.
And Mr. Ferguson.
Excuse me. I would simply say that, excuse me, I would simply say that it's important that I would respect the decision of our voters. If they said yes, so be it. If they said no, so be it. I would respect that decision.
How will you vote?
I would vote no because we still have got some things we need to take care of in this city.
Thank you.
All right. And this question was suggested by the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Floridians have the opportunity this November to vote on Florida Amendment Four titled Amendment to Limit Government Interference with Abortion. The city commission has taken votes on this issue previously. Please explain why you support or oppose this amendment within 15 seconds, beginning with Mr. Dilbert.
I did not support the overturning of Roe versus Wade. Even as a person of faith, I think that would settle law, so I think the government is continuing to overstep its boundaries in regards to women's reproductive rights, so yeah, I wouldn't support it.
You support it?
Yes.
Correct. Mr. Ferguson.
I would simply say that as a man, I haven't had any children. I would say it's not our responsibility to legislate a woman's body or healthcare and how she governs herself. Our goal is to simply support her decision and whatever she chooses best for her.
Commissioner Porter.
Politicians have no role in the medical decisions that women and families make, so I will be voting yes on Amendment Four.
All right, I've got a couple of quick questions for individuals here. Commissioner Porter, in a pretty bitterly divided three-to-two commission, you are often on the minority side with Commissioner Jeremy Matlow. Given that dynamic, it can be hard to make an impact without compromise. With all that in mind, what do you consider the biggest accomplishment of your first term? 30 seconds.
You know, we're not going to win every fight, and we understand that. I think one of my biggest accomplishments is the constituent services that I've provided with so many of our great community members. I was really proud to serve the Meadows Home, the Mobile Home. When their rates were tripled overnight, we were able to raise $30,000 to make sure that many of them received, were relocated, received legal support, so that I am very proud of. And I'm proud of speaking what I believe to be what is right, no matter if I lose.
Mr. Ferguson, you ran last election cycle for county commission and lost to incumbent Nick Maddox. What's different this time around? 30 seconds.
I've learned how to lose. No, I would simply say I've learned a lot from that, which has guarded me to continue to serve, and I want to be of service, and so I've learned a lot from that. And you learn from sometime losing in order so that you may be able to win.
Mr. Dilbert, your website states the people of Tallahassee have been promised change before. Too often, we've been disappointed. You say Tallahassee needs to reconnect. As a political newcomer, what kind of connections do you have, and how can you succeed where others have failed? 30 seconds.
Given that both my personal and professional connections to diverse areas of the community, I think I've gained a respect of different dynamics of our community, and I truly, and I can truly serve in a nonpartisan capacity. As I am a Democrat, but I have conservative friends who I have great high respect regard to, and I believe that we could, I want to reconnect this city, not only economically, but also some of the bitter divide that has been caused politically, and break the divide of our current commission.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Porter, as an incumbent and therefore perceived to be part of what some see as a dysfunctional city commission, do you feel that you bear any responsibility for the bitter split with your colleagues? 30 seconds.
We're all responsible for how we work together, and I take accountability for that, and that, and a lot of people give me advice, and I seek advice. If there was anything that I could do to make it better, I certainly would. That being said, holding each other accountable, asking difficult questions, that is why the voters elected me to this role. We were not elected to be friends with each other. We were elected to work together, and I remain committed to doing so, and I remain committed to doing so for the next four years as well.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, many in Tallahassee believe the current state at City Hall has been damaged by the routine three-to-two split. Can you promise voters you will bring a sense of independence to the seat, or is there no way around aligning with one of the camps if you want to be successful? 30 seconds.
Yes, I believe I can work along with all of our commissioners, including Commissioner Matlow, because I believe the most important thing to do is to work for our community, not against our community, and certainly not against our colleagues. We're there to serve the purpose. We're there to serve the people. So yes, I believe that I will, I am an independent thinker. I'm running my own campaign, and this is what exactly what it looks like. I will certainly run my own office there at City Hall and work along with all the other commissioners to bring civility, harmony, respect, and decorum.
Thank you, Mr. Dilbert. Same question.
You know, I think, you know, I think I'm the only candidate that does not have, you know, current commissioners that are directly backing me. I think they, you know, they have taken positions, all have, most have taken positions on a particular candidate. And I think that comes from the, my reputation of being an independent thinker, and people knowing that I would make decisions without obligation. That's probably why I don't have a lot of these corporate endorsements from these unions and people of sort, because again, individuals want you to align rather than think independently.
Thank you. All right, I appreciate it. Thanks.
We're going to continue on the theme of City Hall climate for a minute here. Rudy Ferguson will begin with you. This is a quick one, too. 30 seconds. Mayor Daley has lamented that city commission meetings have become a political circus. Who, oh, excuse me, what's to blame for the current divide at City Hall, and how will you solve it?
Well, I think certainly bringing, we need to have adults in the room. We need to simply have a sense of respect for everyone's opinion. I believe it's become a problem when you have paid political consultants who come in there simply, not as concerned citizens, but come in as paid political consultants to gripe, who have been sent on a mission. And I believe this causes our city and all across the state of Florida to look, to be embarrassed, in fact, let me just be honest. And I believe for us to be the capital city of the state of Florida, we must be more responsible with our behaviors.
Thank you. Commissioner Jack Porter.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. Mayor Daley has lamented that city commission meetings have become a political circus. What's to blame for the current divide at City Hall, and how will you solve it?
I think that our divide is not based on partisanship or political ideology. I think it's based on who supports the status quo and things remaining the same, and who wants to see change and accountability at City Hall. And we certainly disagree, but if you watch our meetings, we're not discussing policy, unfortunately. It is simply just trying to get through the most basic questions to serve our residents. I think that the mayor unfortunately has not set an appropriate tone. He has cut me off at meetings. He has spoken disrespectfully to the public, and that needs to change as well.
Thank you. Louis Dilbert.
Although I support the mayor, I think he could do a better job at bridging the divide. That's the job of the mayor. You bring the city together. You can't bring the city together if you can't bring your colleagues together. But by taking hard-line stances with certain colleagues, and each person taking a hard-line stance and not swaying, I think, actually Commissioner Matlow has swayed a couple of times to make it a four-one, but other than that, you don't have anybody moving. And so he is, it's his responsibility to bridge that gap and control some of the environment that's going, things are going on.
Okay. The last election cycle was one of the ugliest in recent memory. We saw dark money electioneering websites and allied political operatives try to topple candidates. Will you disavow such efforts right now and tell those who work behind the scenes to stand down? 15 seconds. Commissioner Jack Porter, we'll start with you.
Absolutely. I'm proud to run on my record and my love of Tallahassee and my vision for Tallahassee, and how much we can do and how much better we can be. And that's the kind of campaign I'm running. That's the way I want to govern and lead, so you can count on me for that.
Thank you. Louis Dilbert.
My campaign is focused on what I can do for the city versus what my opponents cannot do. I don't have dark money backing me. I don't have anybody doing commercials behind the scenes, and I'm proud of the campaign that I've run.
Rudy Ferguson.
As a pastor, man of faith, as an example in the city and this community and advocate, my first responsibility is to uphold integrity. And no personal attacks will come from my camp, will come from me. Simply the facts, we will deal with facts and facts only, voting records only.
Okay. Final question in the City Hall climate section of our forum today. The city's attorney, Cassandra Jackson, was widely respected in the legal community. Last year, she announced her early resignation at the same time text messages came out from an assistant city manager disparaging her expertise in development matters. She recently revealed that the texts and public silence from most of the commissioners about it was a major factor in her resignation. Was this handled appropriately? 45 seconds, and we'll begin with you, Rudy Ferguson.
No, I would certainly say it wasn't handled appropriately. I think that it's important that we, as responsible adults and elected officials and also appointed officials, we must always uphold integrity at all times with our colleagues to keep an environment that is safe and secure, and we begin to share opinions. The text messaging, I believe, should be banned. No texting. Of course, back and forth, I think we should simply have communications, either on the telephone or versus in person. But I believe that it's important to understand that everyone should be respected in regards to their profession.
Thank you. Commissioner Jack Porter.
The incident was shameful. The leadership's response was shameful. There should be accountability. I mean, these are the people leading our city. They are at the helm, making upwards of $200,000, and we can't count on them to just stand up for basic decency. So I was proud to stand with our city attorney at the time, Cassandra Jackson, and I believe she is still owed an apology from our city management and from some of my colleagues.
Thank you. Louis Dilbert.
Black women are one of our least protected demographics. And I think in this situation professionally, Ms. Jackson was not protected, was not defended. If I have a relationship with some longstanding positive relationship, I'm going to defend them, even if certain people might be upset. And I don't think the situation was handled appropriately.
What kind of accountability would you like to have seen in this case? It sounds like you're all critical of how it was handled. Mr. Dilbert, one sentence.
Well, I would do an investigation, and if heads have to roll, heads have to roll.
Mr. Ferguson.
I certainly would have brought all parties into the office as commissioner and dealt with this, and then issued a certain apology and moved forward as we continue to heal in this city.
Commissioner Porter.
Certainly, at the very least, an apology. But frankly, I think this is a pattern of behavior and a pattern of disrespect, and the public was given a window of insight into the culture in our upper-level city management.
And what accountability measures should have been taken?
I think Reese Goode needs to be fired. I think it starts with him.
Thank you.
This next section centers on the issue of homelessness. How should our community respond to Florida's unauthorized public camping and public sleeping law, which will take effect October 1st? The bill, or, excuse me, are we at legal risk from business owners and homeowners? One-minute responses, please, starting with Commissioner Porter.
I think we're going to see how that affects our community in the long term, but it's unfortunate that we have the state telling us how to run our business and not giving us the support that we actually need to provide housing. It's going to cost us more to enforce this, so the impact remains to be seen, but it's certainly an issue that the city needs to lead on to address, because we can't have people who don't have homes. That's not good for them, and it's not good for our community as a whole.
Mr. Dilbert.
If I were to see the leadership, I would be in the governor's face and legislature's faces, constantly asking them, okay, what next? Because it's shameful now, individuals don't have as many options or places to go, so guess what? We have to find somewhere for them to go, so that they don't get cited as a homeless person or whatnot. I understand our businesses are concerned about safety and things of that sort, but we have a long way to go in regards to making sure that we deal with our homeless population appropriately. So as a city official, I would make sure that I am in the face of state legislatures and the state of the governor's office, asking how, what support are you going to provide for us now that you have passed this legislation?
Mr. Ferguson.
My heart goes out to the homeless population. My heart goes out to those who are homeless. It really does. As a pastor, we do everything we can to assist with food and clothing. However, we have to control the migration of the homeless population coming from all over the country. We can't become another Seattle. We can't become Portland. We can't become San Francisco. We have to remember that we have to find a way to channel and work with, along with our homeless population to give them the necessary needs, I'm sorry, the tools that they need, and also the education that they need so they can become gainfully employed. Most of them have chosen to live on the streets, and we have to control that. We have to make sure that we put policies in place to protect our citizens, because we don't know who these individuals who have come to our town. We must protect our children. We must protect our elderly. We must protect our neighborhoods. And overall, we must protect the city to ensure that the city is protected at all times. People are coming in this city from all over the country to go to school. We want to make sure that these individuals who are here are safe.
And a follow-up to the question, how is the Kearney Center doing on managing the unhoused population? And is there anything we should be doing differently? 45 seconds, please, beginning with Mr. Dilbert.
They are doing the best they can with the resources. I have a program, an education program that works to try to get college access for those individuals. It's free for them. So they're bringing in the resources to help their individuals outside of just housing them and feeding them. But we have to have another facility. Imagine if I, and I'm going to go to our faith-based organizations. Imagine if most of our faith-based organizations opened up their doors for just one hour a week to feed the homeless. How much that would save the Kearney Center in regards to caring for our homeless population? We have to work with our community, even if it's an incentive provided. We have to work with our faith-based community and social services, continue to work with them to mitigate, and eventually open up another facility.
And Mr. Ferguson.
I have to disagree with Mr. Dilbert. As far as our church is not doing enough, we are, we have limited resources, a lot of our churches, and we have a variety of things that we must cover in order to ensure that that community in which we serve has given the things that they needed. The Kearney Center, in fact, is not doing a very well job, because they are underfunded. And plus, we have a migration of more people coming who, from the homeless population coming into town, so they can only house so many people. And some have chosen not to go inside. Some would rather live on the streets and build camps on the side of Pensacola Street, or even in fact, behind businesses on top of roofs of businesses on Pensacola Street. These are situations that we must rectify. We must bring to bear. I am simply not trying to look past our homeless population. I simply want to help them.
And Commissioner Porter, please.
The Kearney Center is incredible resource, as are all of the nonprofit providers that step into that space. I think that the state of housing and homelessness is a failure of leishership at the federal, state, and local level, and there's so much more that we need to be doing and that we can do to address the homelessness and housing crisis.
All right, squeeze it in one quick question from a reader. How should the city work to retain recent college graduates by making Tallahassee the ideal place for them to start a family and career rather than other cities? Just 30 seconds. Mr. Dilbert.
You have to have good-paying jobs. You have to have arts district and entertainment that will keep them here and entice them to stay here and continue to make it affordable to live here as a recent college graduate.
Mr. Ferguson.
I believe that we could go with our, we need more tech labs and we need more mag labs in order to use in our market from these great minds that we've educated. Tallahassee is a beautiful city, natural beauty, and it can grow responsibly. And I think that we can retain these great minds. I believe the city will grow responsibly. And also, we'll see more entertainment coming to Tallahassee because we have grown. So certainly, more tech labs, more mag labs, and more businesses that will come to Tallahassee, Florida.
Commissioner Porter.
I agree with what my opponents have said. And in addition, as one of those people who came to Tallahassee and decided to stay, I think we need to be listening to young leaders and young people in our communities who have decided to stay. And one thing that I hear over and over again, in addition to some of the things that were mentioned, are public transit. People want to be able to live in a city without having to have a car. I think that's one way that we can really set ourselves apart.
It is closing time. You have 60 seconds to speak directly to voters. You can mention your website. And Mr. Ferguson, we're going to start with you.
Thank you so much for this great opportunity. I'm Rudy Ferguson. I have been a part of this community for a better part of 40 years. I am a sixth-generation Ferguson in this town. My grandmother and grandfather and my mother, and I've worked on behalf of all of the less fortunate from my time with the Urban League, also my time also with the Sheriff Department, the Police Department, and all of our central services. I am running for office simply because it is time that we bring civility, responsibility. It's time that we get the work done. We have long fussed, and we've long cussed, and we've long pointed fingers. Now is the time to get the work done. This is a paramount situation. And certainly, you're welcome to go to my website, rutieferguson.com. I look forward to being your next commissioner, and I will serve you with all integrity, because I have been serving with integrity. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter, closing time.
Thank you. I'm running to be your commissioner for the next four years, because I love this community, and I'm fighting for people's voices in City Hall. This election, you have a choice. We're talking about whether we want corporate power, insider power, or people power, making decisions about our future. It's been the honor of my life to serve you, and I hope that you will trust me for four more years. I will listen to you, and I will fight for you. Please join us by voting on August 20th, and you can visit jackfortalahassee.com to get more involved.
Mr. Dilbert, take us out.